I'd like to call the order, call to order the committee, the whole meeting for February 28th, 2023 at 5:31 PM. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Attendance roll call.
All the persons will.
Here.
Terrence.
Here.
Hamel is not here. Kapusta is not here. Schrader.
Here.
Kabaki.
Here.
Madden.
Here.
We have a quorum present.
Thank you. Statement of public notice?
The meeting was noticed in accordance with the open meeting law.
Thank you. Motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve.
Second.
All's in discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Approval of minutes from October 11th, 2022.
Move to approve. Second.
Question, corrections, changes? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed, that passes. New business. Item number one, discuss ARPA funds. Scott.
Free money?
Hey, how's everyone doing tonight? So good. Here's a sheet. You can take a sheet, pass it down. We're here again. I think this is our third time of kind of having this discussion. We need some direction from you guys. We are running out of time. We have to earmark some funds. We have to do it, I think earmarking by 24, construct everything by 26. And I kind of gave you, the mayor's kind of like idea was to see how can we improve utilities for areas of commercial in Meskego. I just kind of gave you about top five of some of the items that, some we talked about before. Again, we're open to a lot of things, guys, you know, but we are limited in how to use them. There are certain rules. I got a stack of rules to kind of go through them, but the main focus was kind of on the utilities. A couple of things that maybe you didn't see, or number four, test corners, four culvert pipes that need to get replaced. So, I don't know if you guys are familiar where that one is. There's four pipes over there. We have to annually check all our bridges and culvert pipes. We just did our inspection in the fall, and one of them is deteriorating rather quickly. And yesterday, if you would have been over there, it was probably, the water was probably up to the top or to the bottom of that bridge. So it gets a large sum of water. There's four culvert pipes over there. We don't know if we would reline the culvert pipes or looking at it, or replace them with a big box culvert. So, just to kind of let you guys know about that one. And that one's just real recent. I think the only money that we've ever spent on the ARPA funds is when we did Glen of Meskego Lakes. I asked for just reimbursement for the water main.
For the oversizing.
For the water main.
So we have 2.6 million to work with?
Ish.
Ish, yeah.
And what are the price tags on these things?
So, a couple of things, just to kind of get you through, because I know you were going to ask a couple of those things. So, three, water loop on Hillendale Road, just the Hillendale Road reconstruction, that was 2.2 million, okay? But we can't use it for that unless I build the water main underneath the road, then I can build the road, okay? So, the test corners for culvert pipes to get replaced with a box culvert, that could go anywhere up to half a million dollars, to three quarters of a million dollars. Taking water and sewer down Highway 36 for commercial. You'd use up most of it for that project, was 2.6. Water tower near GFL landfill. Half of it, we'd probably use for that. And the loop around Little Meskego Lake and bring up to Racine and get to, I think we were about 2 million, I think, when we did that. I think that was about 2 million, that was about a couple of years ago. Now, why I say that is, the price to put water in right now is through the roof. I'm just being honest with you. Since the Glen of Meskego started, that's a big one down, 16-inch water main, just the price of the 16-inch water main doubled since when they started putting that in. So, but we're looking for ideas. We're looking for suggestions because besides earmarking, I got to get some construction going on, some stuff. I got to get some things, kind of, you know, looking at things.
Well, that box culvert on Test, that's by the fire station?
It's just a little bit further down from the fire station.
Okay, is that the one right between the mobile station and the fire station?
Yeah, here, I got a nice map for you, too.
Where the road comes smaller?
It kind of comes down right here. There's a little entranceway where the nursery is. Yeah, there's the four, but it's.
That's the one right by Lamb?
No, it's further down from, yeah, yep, yep.
Okay, the, on the turn, okay.
Yeah, on the turn. You can see the four.
Yeah, that's pretty bad there.
It's, it's, this one right here is deteriorating right there, so.
What's the cost on that one?
Again, we're guessing half million to a million, depending on what we do. If we were able to reline it, it's going to save a lot of money. If it's to the point where we got to rip all the pipes out and just put a standard box culvert in there, if you look at it, the four pipes are in there, they're all set at different heights. I don't know why. It's pretty overgrown. A nice single box culvert might make it better sense. But we're beginning just to do the survey work because we have to do something. If it's not going to be solved now, it's going to come, I'm going to come back to you in a couple of years and do it. It's going to be on a capital, you're going to see it on the capital in the next three years coming up, so.
That area, you got like the one right before it, by the mobile station, the one further down, right before Woods. I guess that'd be Hale Park Drive or something. Those, those three drain a lot of water out of that whole area. And, you know, we got to keep that flowing, especially by Lamb's. I mean, those two are treacherous over there.
And those look good. We get everything looked at every year. That one right there.
But I'm saying, but that's still by the other Lamb's, by their field.
Yeah. And that, that one there, without a doubt, yesterday.
I've walked over that, and that, it doesn't look like it flows very well.
Yeah.
You know, and it looks like it's actually needs to be cleaned out more. Maybe you guys did that since I've been there, but.
No, no, we're going to clean it out, and we're looking at all the stuff for the one down, that one right there, for sure.
But I have to say, though, anything on the test corners, it pulls a lot of water out of, a lot of areas that create problems. We've had, before you guys probably, Adam knows more about it way back when, when you get into the Fountainwood area and all that, that.
This won't improve or change that, it just keeps it.
Well, it'll keep it flowing, and that's my point, that we've done a lot of improvements, that this would be a good project to keep flowing. Plus, it's an easy one to knock off the list. Say you want to do two things, you can do, say like water, where you take water down to 36, you can take it as far down as the money gives you.
What is?
You don't have to do the whole project, you just take it down as far as you can go with whatever money is left.
What's the water tower get us?
At some point, we are, we are looking for another water, you know, down that area, as you have more and more homes and stuff, we're going to probably need another water tower in there for storage. So. Now, we are not even in talks, again, why we say close to GFL land, because, you know, it's near landfill. Not a lot of people have a problem putting a water tower next to a landfill, you know, because of the fact is, for appearance, for appearance wise.
Lipstick on a pig.
Landfill trash.
But now, how would that be funded? Would that be funded through the water funds, if you put the water tower to?
ARPA funds can use, ARPA funds can be used for water, sanitary.
If we didn't use these funds, how would you fund?
We would have to, we would have to use it for water utility.
It'd be water utility?
Correct. Just water utility.
So that would be the people that use the water would pay for that, where?
Correct.
The one on Test Corners, for instance, it's a taxpayer's expense, because we're, we revenue share, or whatever you want to say, all that. Expenses rolled away and all that. So there's a difference there of how we want to approach it. Either we're going to use money for certain individuals, or we can use money for all the individuals. And that's my point on this. So if we're going to put some money somewhere, it should go to all the individuals first. And what's left, it should go to the projects, so that we don't lose the money that only benefits certain individuals.
Scott, if you had to prioritize these, how would you prioritize them?
First one is Test Corners for culvert pipes, because I'm going to have to do it. I mean, and again, it wasn't on my list six months ago, but as soon as we did the study, and we're poking our head down there, and we're seeing the pipe undermine, similar what happened to this, remember when Woods Road, probably like five years ago, it collapsed, and then we shut it down. That for sure. That's to me a no-brainer. It's going to have to be done. I'm going to put in a capital, so that, and we would have definitely enough funds to do it, for sure.
So if we, if we do that, we have to rip the road up?
One moment.
What?
Beyond that.
Beyond that. You're, we're tossed, I mean, again, we're having a little toss-up back and forth.
Hillendale needs to be rebuilt.
You're right. And that would, there will be a, a way to get it done, because that stretch of Hillendale, the water main has to go right down the middle of the road. We've got sewer on both sides of the road, so the water main has to go down the middle.
But that's going to coincide with the reconstruction of the road, right?
Well, yeah, but we could pay for the reconstruction of the road by running water down it.
Right.
We can use the ARPA funds for that road.
You can't use the ARPA funds for road construction, but you rebuild the road after you put the water in.
But you can use it for restoration of the road, or replace it.
And that takes up the whole.
That would eat up probably all or more.
No, I mean, not that it's a bad thing, I'm just saying.
It would eat up everything, and just.
Yeah.
But it also saves us a big bill that we have coming.
Yeah. For example, I tried to use, I tried to get BIL funds for that road, remember? I applied, it went through Sewer PAC to try to get it. We were number.
3,086.
Yeah, 50 on the list of 100, so we didn't get the funds. But I still went after that to get it. But that portion of that road from Hillendale has to be reconstructed, without a doubt. We know it is.
So Test Corners and Hillendale?
I mean.
That feels like the.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, next topic.
I mean, Test Corners for sure, but I mean, again.
I don't disagree with that. I just want to, you know, be clear that, you know, originally, and for those watching, originally our plan was to try to find ways of expanding economic development, and, you know, I think these needs are more pressing than doing that right now, so I would agree with, I would agree with that.
And we can make that decision, too, if we want to invest resources in the future. Those are the options. These are kind of, these aren't options? These have to happen? And that's what I was seeing, that.
These are needs that.
You're going to do them anyway, whether we do them here or do them in three or four years, I'd rather spend the money here, because we don't know what it's going to look like in three or four years, if we have the resources to do the other things, so.
But then again, going back to what I said, the loop, this, there's already water there for everybody?
The loop number.
Is that the one you're talking about, Hillendale?
Oh, Hillendale? Well, the water loop, if you look at from Sunny Hill to Racine, so it's about half, it goes only about halfway down. And that's like the main portion from Sunny Hill goes to that field. You know that intersection that's really terrible right there? It's fields, right? That's fields? That it's like, yeah, okay, that all needs to be like blown up and like restarted over with a 90 degrees. That would be all reconstructed from Sunny Hill all the way to the Racine. And if you look at that road right there, that portion of Hillendale is horrendous. I believe at one point, that was supposed to be done before I got here, before the other portion of Hillendale, and right before I got here, it flip-flopped for some reason. But they were looking at that original study of that. And if you want to get to history, I think former member, Alderman Inglehart, knew that. And I looked at the back. That portion of Hillendale was supposed to be done first, and that's full reconstruction.
What's the hypothetical cost of just doing the road?
I said, I estimated 2.2 million.
So 2.2, I mean, well, so let's just say, right, and that's including the water underneath, right?
No, that was just the road when I bid the road.
Oh, okay, okay, got it.
Again, but again, if you have a road and a water main, let's say it costs another million dollars, and we have 2.6, and so I got you three quarters of it being spent by ARPA funds, it's a good deal, I guess, is the best way to put it.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, so most of this is road construction rather than water construction?
It's water first, but road, then we completely do the whole road above it.
So what's the difference in ratio on price between the road and the water?
Not much, once you have it tore up.
Yeah. There's, I mean, again, I'm just estimating about a million dollars for the water and 2.2 for the road.
Oh, on top of that?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, so this is 3.2 million?
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. It's probably, I only could do an estimate of 2.2 for the road, because that was the original plan.
Right.
But in order to get the road done.
That's what I was trying to see, if that included, okay.
But then if you look at Hillendale, on the other side, when we did it, we estimated 2.2, and it came in at 1.6.
So, so again, you know what I mean? We're hoping.
Yeah, maybe, maybe gas prices will come down.
Well, the bigger the project, the more bidders, the better prices that we tend to get, so.
Can we group the two projects together? Is that what you're going to try to do?
Oh, we would, we would.
We have to.
Yeah.
You literally have to, because otherwise you're not.
You have to bid them separately, or can you bid them as a package?
Package. You want them to do it right again, so that's all ARPA funds, because it makes sense.
And the other question on the Test Corner one is, is where we're putting that in? Because I know when they did the other Test Corners way back when, the road goes in and back out, because they didn't build it far enough out, would we make that a little bit bigger over there for future?
No, no, the road's wide enough there, because there's a bridge and there's sidewalks and everything like that.
On the one side, but the other side, there isn't.
We weren't, now, we weren't planning, because if we, we don't know yet.
I was just saying, would you put an overhang on there?
What if we lined it?
I'm just bringing that up because it didn't happen further down, and you never know.
We will always look at those scenarios at that case, because, again, if you do it, and let's say we have to replace it with a culvert, we want to do it all at once, and then later, if we have to replace the roads on both sides, then you're already done. So we would look at that if we would go that method.
Well, I'm just thinking, because, you know, that's a nasty area there, that you can widen that for the turn, because that's always been a, an ugly spot, you know, there's some bad spots on there, so.
I'm hoping maybe we just can reline the pipes, and if we line the pipes only, it saves a ton more, it saves a lot of money instead of full replacement.
Well, that, yeah, some of that could go towards, if we do Hillendale, I guess.
Correct.
All right. Got your orders.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Scott.
Trails discussion. This was asked, put on here by your request.
Yes. Just kind of wanted to review. I know this came up when we were looking at development, and just kind of bounce around the idea of forward-looking on how we can, I say force, but put something in to have development sort of pre-plan for trail development across the community. Cool, what is this guy? Nice.
So I'll start giving a little history. If you'll ever look at our parks and open space plan, there is a pretty good future recreational trail recommendation. Now, this was done before I was even, even here. And now we're in the process of updating this plan, and one of the portions is the rec trails and recommendations. So what I did was, I worked with Nick and our GIS, and we updated from when, the time I've been here. So, for example, you can see the latest trails that were constructed from the last one, is we did a little bit of Long Racine to get that, from the high school to get to that last subdivision. We did that little portion of Martin, that kind of was the two that we bid out. And again, these were projects that we bid out as a city, and then we constructed them, okay? Just to give you an idea. We did Bay Lane Place, that was part of when we did Bay Lane Road. We built that, it was the reconstruction of that. We did not, we chose not to do the Hillendale Road project, and that's what I marked on there, too, as part of the reconstruction. It just was chosen not to do it. There's a little bit through Plum Creek, there's kind of like, there's walkways on the road, but there's no signage up there, but it's one of the, kind of the pass, just in case. And then there was another one, I believe that's Lannan Road. When I got here, I think the 30% kind of preliminary with plans was like $450,000, and it was decided, that's a lot, too much money, and we're not going to do it. Since then, also, that's not on here, Ryan Road was about a million dollars, that was voted down at Public Works and Safety. And then that last portion of Martin Road, from Lannan to right about where Kirkland Crossing is, in yellow, that's what, Alderman, Terrence, you asked me to put on, which is part of the parks in the capital, and that's about $875,000. The other one, too, just to let you know, is the big one, that We Energies Rec one. The mayor asked me to get a cost for putting five inches of asphalt on it. So, five inches of asphalt is $1 million. However, We Energy says, we want five inches of asphalt, six inches of base, and we want 10-foot wide, and to hold a load of a truck, HS20. So if just the asphalt was a million, we're basically building a full road for that, for that trail. I, I'm, I'm just letting you know, right now.
There's activist groups, because I've sent you stuff from somebody that's involved in all that.
Correct.
That would find money out there. I don't know, but, but for a road 10 feet, whatever, I don't know.
I'm just, I want to, I want to be honest with you, with, like, when, after doing the research, and I talked to Jim, I talked to him, like, hey, by the way, this is what We Energy wants, and he knows the person, We Energy, he's like, holy cow. It's a, it's a lot of money, guys, for that trail. And, and they own, they still own the trail, we, you know, have. So that'd be a lot of money just to do that. Funding, he said, sent a couple of things for funding, when we do the funding sources. Same thing, we're part of Sewer PAC, so we are part of the planning area of Sewer PAC. Sewer PAC, that means, when we go for a job for a trail, we compete with City of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County. So that's trail, we, it's all on point systems. So whoever wins, and Jim brought it up in one thing, why does Waukesha County have very little winning in Excel file at Milwaukee County and City of Milwaukee? It's on points. It's how many people are users, what's the benefit, how many people are next to the trails? We will never win when we go for that funding, similar to how we didn't win for Hillendale. And, and I'm not trying to be, it's not just us, it's other little communities that are still in Sewer PAC. For example, Wind Lake is part of Sewer PAC. That's tough. We're competing and we're losing dollars to them, which is mostly go to State of Milwaukee, Milwaukee County. So, this is the background. Whenever we look at trails, this is what we start with. This is our base, okay? So when someone says, hey, what about a trail here, what, how to, how can we do it? So this is what we always use, just to kind of get you guys, that's the history of it.
Cool. Well, thank you for that. That was a lot of work, I appreciate it.
No, it's, really, it's not. It's just to kind of give you the history of where we're at. So, now, funding and how, how we look at some of the things for trails, and maybe Adam can fill you in a little bit here of what we kind of look at and do, so.
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of the funding, you know, when a developer is doing a subdivision, if there's a trail on the trail plan that Scott passed out, that shows there should be a trail adjacent to your development or through it, you know, the codes definitely make it really clear, we can make the developer do that at their expense.
Okay.
But that's really only the frontage in front of them. So using Kirkland as an example, it's kind of a moot point, because right across the street's already a trail. And the one thing that a lot of the stuff talks about is, our goal isn't to have trails on both sides of the street. You know, Janesville Road's a little bit different, more of a sidewalk scenario, but in most of our trail scenarios, you're going to have it on one side or the other.
But when you do two sides of the trail, they have to be maintained, there's a different governing.
Not necessarily. It depends on what they're called.
With the plowing and stuff.
It has those classifications of how they're paved and how wide. So having two versus one doesn't make a difference with how you maintain it. It's really what you classify it as. But the developer can only pay, we can only make them pay for their section. And if there's already a trail there, you know, we can't get the trail from, you know, two miles away to their development the way that the ordinance is written, you know. So then as far as, you know, funding sources, otherwise, it would just be, you know, budgeting, you know, which, as we've seen on these past projects, Scott mentioned, some of the ones that were denied, were denied because of their significant cost, you know. Redoing a trail when you're redoing a road makes it way more palatable, even still ups your total cost, compared to just doing a trail to do a trail's sake, you know, dollar per dollar. You know, we do collect some fees and stuff for, you know, park dedication, conservation dedication, but they're really not just to put a trail anywhere. If you were like doing a new park, and you're doing a build-out, you know, in that Parker Conservation Area with the trail, that's one thing. But it, the way our stuff is set up right now, and maybe that's something that could be looked at being changed some days with our dedication fees, the state law is really restricted what we can use those for, but maybe we could some, at some point on the road, look to see, can we set up a dedication fee, or fee in lieu of a dedication, or something like that, where maybe we're requiring a developer to put money for a future trail that might not necessarily impact their area, but more the greater, big of the city. But with those getting tighter and tighter, what they can be used for, I think that's going to be harder and harder to even try to get through, if it's even possible.
So the, kind of the teeth of the ordinance to have it put in means we need to have a plan, right? Is that what that?
For sure, yeah. The ordinance references, like having them put it in where the plan is, and that plan that Scott mentioned that's being updated, that is, that's the plan. So you want to put a lot of thought into that.
Yeah, if we wanted to be future-thinking, we would want to make sure this plan has it on there. That way, when somebody develops this farmland that we don't have a trail in front of it yet, and we're like, oh, we probably should have had it on the plan, that's where that needs to happen in order to kind of give you the, the ability to say, hey, you're, you're doing this, by the way, there's going to be that. You have to make sure that you follow, sort of, okay.
And we've had some subdivisions, so I think it's Woodland Creek, the one that's just a little bit south of the high school, that was an example. It was in the middle of nowhere, but our plans, I think, showed a trail there, so they had to build their frontage. You know, kind of people complained, hey, you have a trail to nowhere, you have this little section. Correct, it was a trail to nowhere for a while, but then eventually, you know, through different funding projects, the city and budgeting, you know, we can make those smaller connections, right? It's more palatable if you're only making a small connection versus, you know, miles of it. So even though you might have disjointed segments, that's probably better than nothing, because over time, you can hopefully fill those segments, you know, as part of some larger project to complete those, those connection points.
Cool. How often, so this is kind of big picture, how often do we update this? I know we talk about it all.
So that plans every five years, but it can be updated as often as you want it to be. Yeah. We've made changes, I think, over time to it here and there.
Another thing, too, just, for example, here's two good subdivisions. Mallard Reserve just went in, and, and it's being built now with the homes. There's a connection point from the Marshland Camps Conservation Area to their subdivision. It can't be more than like 80 feet, 100 feet of paved asphalt with a, with an ADA ramp that's between two homes. So that means someone could potentially go, while you're walking around the subdivision, go to the Marshland Camps or whatever, go around the conservation, and come back. And then potentially, you can go through that subdivision, and then Sand Hill Parks right there on Pregal Drive, do you know what I mean? So that's kind of how we look at little connection points. Kirkland Crossing is another one. We know it's going to butt next to Park Arthur. So we have a little, kind of a little trail that's going to be between, kind of where the, like, potentially where that horse farm is now, if that all goes through, and they put houses there, if that could be like 200 feet, and it come off the road, and then you get in, can get into Park Arthur. So that means that subdivision can access Park Arthur through their back and forth, you know. But those, those are, we always look at different ideas when we look at, Adam's really good, and if you look at this map, it's got a really kind of robust potential trails. Like, we put a lot on here for that simple reason, is we got a plan. But what makes it tough is, and I know a lot of people want, like, from Woods Road, kind of east of the roundabout there, well, that's all going to be us. There's no new development, there's nothing. It would be funded through a capital budget for, you guys would say, guess what, we want to do that project. What we kind of look for, and kind of, our idea is always completing loops. Loop seems like the best way. You get a loop, people like the longer way to walk around. There's a park, there, we kind of, you know, that's why we went and we prioritize some of these as they are. Now, things are going to change, because planned loops, now that Hillendale's, that one's off, I got to kind of relook at that how it is. But that's part of our update of the plan, so.
Okay.
But, but Adam, and, and we always do this. Whenever we have a subdivision, we always, one of the biggest thing, and we always put notes on there, if you don't, or you got a plan for like an easement on your property for a future trail. So we, is Meskego Lakes Estate have one?
Yeah, I think so.
So even Meskego Lakes Estates has an easement on there, saying, for a future planned trail, if there ever one goes in there. So we do a pretty good job of making sure that that's around, so.
Does, does that sort of protect, I think of subdivisions and paths between them, and you sort of then have future homeowners, and what happens with that? Is there some sort of protection that that doesn't become homeowners being like, I don't like people walking my property, boom, there's some sort of?
Well, we have an easement, and.
Got it.
Again, what happens.
Formal, yeah.
It's not their property.
And that would be the goal.
Does it happen? Yes, without a doubt, but, you know, usually someone, you know, lets us know, and then we go talk to them, and then we say, by the way, there's an easement here. We do a pretty good job, too, of like, hey, by the way, you're, you're next to an easement or a trail, you know, on your plat, you can't have your landscaping. And landscaping does seem to creep past people's property lines all the time. It's just a fact of life. You know, you know, and we deal with those on a case-by-case scenario. And a lot of times, we try not to get, you know, cite them or anything. We just kind of meet with them first, and then send a little letter, and then they call us, and then we work, try to work through it, before we get Jeff involved, so.
Okay.
Cover everything you need?
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything else on trails they want to add?
I know.
Well, I'm in the distant priority area, so I don't have anything to say.
Thank you.
Yeah, come and talk to us anytime.
It was kind of what I was hoping was there, and just didn't have enough of the insight. I know it's hard to predict where people are going to develop, and then to respond, hey, they're thinking about developing down here, put it on the map, and I get part of that. The, the team that works on the development for this, is that kind of the whole community people can be a part of that, or is that?
So, how it started was, we had, for this, just to let you know, we had about 1,000 surveys that we sent out, I think. I think we had a stack. A lot of them were around the parks, and then, then we work together, once we get these surveys, and we start looking and start, again, top five things in a park, dog parks, splash pad, you know, some of those things. We asked about trails. Everyone wants more trails, you know, how we're funding them is, you know, always a problem.
I know we did that, specifically, okay, we've got the trails, let's identify those areas. The, the committee that does that.
Parks, Parks and Conservation Committee. Usually, we give it to them. Now, again, we're giving it to them, they're reading. If they don't respond back, we're kind of like moving forward, you know. But it's their, it's, they're the ones that are supposed to give you recommendations to us, that when then we have the final document to you, you guys are going to approve it, so. And if you have comments, you're a citizen, come and let us know. I mean, that's, that's what we're here for, so.
And that, right now, it's scheduled every five years?
Yeah. Yeah.
I wonder if that's something maybe we could do more frequently, like, more like a three-year schedule?
It's a lot of work. It's not like, it's, it's not something that they sit down, want to do.
I mean, obviously, you're not going to. Obviously you're not gonna redo the whole thing, but, I mean, development happens, right? We can't add something after a development starts, you can't be like, oh, you just purchased.
But if you pre-plan where you want them, as a development happens, it's there, and that's, that's kind of why every five years we're looking at stuff. I, I think five years is.
Yeah, and you, it's coming up where you guys can look at this stuff, but I'll be honest too, you, from our standpoint, five years, that's nothing. I, I mean, you, you would, you would be surprised how fast things go. What do we know, doing our comp plan fifteen, so the new comp plan that you're coming is fifteen, it's kind of good too, because, okay, here's something, when the new comp plan comes in a little bit, then off that comp plan, I'm gonna take a lot of ideas, put them in the parks plan so that we know, okay, based off of the comp plan, where we're seeing, or we're changing some of our zoning, that might change where we see some of the effects of some of the, the trails. Because if we open up more areas, for example Kirkland, where we're seeing it, that would make more sense of, okay, you get more density there, this might be a priority more in, in the trails that we look at. But five years, it would be really tough, because know what else too? We're doing this with internally with our staff, I don't have any cons, I, I'm trying to keep this cost effective. So, you know, we're, we're using our city staff and we do it while we're doing everything else as well, just like, you know.
And it doesn't mean that, like you said, it doesn't mean that you, we can't make changes in between those five years. It's just, we take a, a big global look at it every five years, and we use that as a guide. Things pop up in between, we can make adjustments to it, but.
I think the thing that's important is when you look at it, don't look at it as where might development happen, because whether we're paying for a developer, it should be irrelevant. The idea from smart planning is, plan where it's a smart place to have a trail, regardless of who's paying for it. And if a developer pays for it, we'll call it a bonus for the community then, you know? And some of these may not happen because of budgetary constraints, but at least, you know, almost call it a wish list, right? It's a practical wish list, is what it is.
Well, and I'm even, obviously having developers pay for it is nice, but ultimately, then the homeowner buys whatever. The idea that we were able to do them ahead of time, right? We've got the areas that we've marked that were litter, there's no space because we didn't, however, a long time ago. Just the idea that we're planning to say, hey, even if it is the city that's footing the bill for it, we're carving that space out to say, we want that reserved area of space to make this happen, even if it ends up being on us, I think that's.
Space is already there through the right of way, we're not gonna, this, this plan doesn't change.
Yeah, I know, I'm only comparing it to, like, for example, the one that I brought up, there's sections of property that we would end up having to take back, right? It, it wasn't necessarily, the road isn't wide enough, the, that, it, it wasn't pre-planned that there was going to be a path there and area was left, so I, I just wanted to make sure that that's part of.
Yeah, yeah, and again, you know, right of ways, with, everything's in right of way.
Yeah.
Utilities, trees, homes, you know, we're all fighting for a limited amount of space. So, again, it, it makes it as, you can do it, it just starts getting more costly, you know? When you look at woods where it's a little bit longer or wider right of way, you're, you're not on top of each other, you know, there's still plenty of space. When you start talking about Martin, and just drive Martin.
Yep.
You, there, there's not much room, there's, we're, we're running out of room for utilities, you're running out of room. You know that those ditches take a lot of water, you know, without a doubt, you're gonna have to bury all those ditches, and you're gonna have to have enough storm sewer pipes, big enough to handle the flows. And I'm sure yesterday, that water was rushing down those, those, those ditches. And it's got to make sure it can handle that, and at the same time, you got to make it safe. You can't be like, okay, here's a road that's thirty-five, and, yeah, there's a, there's a path that's not really a curb and gutter, and I'm, I can fall off that anytime. So, again, there's a lot of things go in there, but as you do, it just jumps up the cost in, in some of these cases, so.
Okay, thank you. All right, last item on new business, discuss open liquor in public. So as you may have come to realize over the last three years, I don't, I like, I don't like government getting in a rope wave of stuff. And one of the things I've came up through a discussion once, my wife and I, we go for a walk a lot in the summer, walk through the subdivision, and I usually grab a beverage and I stick it in the cup and I walk down the street. I'm breaking the law when I do that, and I started thinking of like, why, why is, why is this even a rule? There, there's things that you can do, like if I'm, if I'm drunk in public, well, we have an ordinance on that. If I do litter, public, urination, whatever, we have, we have ordinances for all that. The open intoxicant part is really, there's no requirement from the state that we have it. There's no, no state statutes that say there is, it's illegal. So, what I'm coming forward to see if there's an appetite for repealing that. Not only for that reason, there's actually other things that have popped up through fundraisers, through some, some organizations that want to do things like wine walks and things like that, which are getting to be more popular in other communities, where you can, you know, go from establishment and, like, say five different places, and you walk from one to the next. The way our ordinance right now is written, it, it becomes difficult and if not prohibitive to do stuff like that, so. Before I dive too far, I'm sorry, what? No, not if we, what, you wouldn't if you got, if you, if you are allowed to walk down the street with open, open. Well, a permit, but you have to have a license premise, so I'm not sure you could even do it. And we already looked the other way in all this stuff, and that's why chief's here, I did run this by the chief, he ran it by his command staff, and you can come up and, you know, kind of give your two cents on it if you want, but.
So this kind of the Pet Folsky provision?
Yes.
I think a lot of communities have this though.
A lot of communities have an open intoxicant rule, there's a few that don't, but I think it's antiquated. I, I just don't see the need for it, because if you're causing trouble, there's other things that we can give a ticket for.
That's, that's exactly the point, if you're causing other problems and being disorderly, public drunkenness, urination, littering, there's a very, a myriad of things that we could do as far as enforcement action. The reality is, I can't find one case that on Halloween, when they're trick or treating with your family, that officers are asking you to dump out your liquor or beverage, throwing it in a Yeti mug. It's a matter of being responsible citizens, and I, it does not matter to me either way, because generally speaking, it is one of those things, if it's Halloween and you're walking around with your kids, you can bet that we're not enforcing that, especially on that evening. If you want to do a wine walk in a neighborhood, we're, we're really not enforcing it to begin with now. Any questions?
I mean, wouldn't then Jamon on Janesville technically be full of a bunch of illegal?
It already is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, like, everybody that's there should be getting taken.
We've got an.
Parades and license premise, you know, sometimes they'll have a permit and there's.
Parades are allowed.
Allowed, so those are some other exclusions, but generally speaking.
But people walked down the road.
What?
People walked down the road technically.
Yeah, but a parade, a parade by state statute and our, and our own ordinance, within two hundred feet of a parade route, you're allowed to. So.
The entire city of Meskego is a parade route from now on.
So before we go too far down, is there an appetite for this or not?
Sure.
Any objections?
I'm all for cutting things out.
Right, that's kind of what I thought.
Shorten the book, whatever, whatever the book is.
Okay, all right, we'll start bringing.
Any questions for me, feel free, but I can tell you, we haven't issued any of these citations in years.
I mean, there are communities that do very vigorously, like Geneva, I mean, that's, I was there for, the chamber has a boat cruise every summer, and we're, while we're waiting for our, our, our thing, a group of us went inside the little gift shop there and bought a can of, like a wine cooler or something, and people walk by and like, do not have that around, they will issue you a hundred and eighty dollar ticket without blinking about it, so. There are communities that do it, Madison's real aggressive on it, you know, but most communities aren't, just.
I know, right, Madison of all places.
We're not those communities, exactly, so.
So do you think at some point, the ability to do that, as word gets around, people start taking advantage of it and it starts getting out of control?
We have, like we said, anything that they'd be doing wrong, we have on the books already.
I understand that, these guys are usually pretty busy already.
If it gets to be a problem, we can deal with it, but I don't see it being a problem. I, I, I mean, we're, ninety percent of the time, you're just walking down the street, doing nothing.
If it's concealed, nobody knows anyway.
Right.
Fill it out, fill it can, put a label on it or something, then it's different, right?
But I don't think it should matter. All right, we'll bring something forward in the next, next few months. Any communications in miscellaneous business? Motion to adjourn would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned at six twelve.